Dear Heavenly Father, I come to you to thank you for your worship and grace. And we ask that you be with us tonight, offering us wisdom and understanding as we go through our meeting here with the McKee City Council tonight. And these things we pray in your son's name. Amen.
Let's allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible.
We deliver thee from justice for all. You should have received a copy of the meeting minutes from the last meeting. I will declare motion to approve.
I make that motion.
Motion to approve the minutes is your second?
I'll second it.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Favors report. Danielle, you want to talk about the IDA?
Yes, okay, I put a hand out there for you all. The Industrial Belting Authority is asking all of the accounts that they administrate for permission to increase their administrative fees. They get $200 per month, per account, to be the administrator over that account. And they haven't changed or raised their fees since like before I was born. And things like QuickBooks, like the QuickBooks went way up in price. They've had a lot of price increases, so they're just asking for, to go from $200 to $400 a month for administrative fees. If you all would approve that for the account administration.
How many fees accounts do they have to handle for us?
They just have the one, so it would just be the one account.
One account, is it?
It's the McKee revolving loan fund. And like it's technically ours, but technically not. It was, it was the one that was created with the grant. Yeah, through the car and his own stuff, so. It's just, it's labeled as a McKee account, but like it's not included in our audits or anything to do with us, but it's still lightly attached to us, so they need your all's approval to raise the administrative fee on that.
Do we get any money out of it?
No, it has, it literally has nothing to do with the city other than it was created to give loans to small businesses in the city.
But like.
They want to raise the administrative fee to $400 a month.
And that, that money comes out?
It comes out of that account. We don't pay that. It comes out of that account.
And how much money is in that account?
A hundred and twenty-five thousand, I think, at the last meeting.
That ain't coming out of the city.
No, it's the fund that's there, that they already take care of. It doesn't change anything for you all as a city.
Isn't it actually, that count is to give loans to businesses in our community?
Yep.
In the city.
Yeah, in the city.
So who did you say pays into this account?
It was created with a CDBG grant a million years ago, and so like it's not even really grant money anymore. It's been borrowed out and paid back two or three times. So it's holdover. That's, yeah, I mean, that's what they, they would get $400 a month that they pay out once a year out of that account. He pays it out to the IDA once a year. No, the city doesn't pay it. They, they already administer, they already get $200 a month to, to be the administrators over this.
How much time is it long?
They do monthly financial statements. They have to administer any loan payments that go in and out of it. They have to pay an accountant to take care of it, and they have to pay for an annual audit on it.
Yeah, I've talked to Mitchell about it. I think it's a reasonable request.
I'm making motion.
So we have a motion to increase the monthly fee, administrative fee paid to the IDA, from the IDA.
I'll second.
And second by reach. Any further discussion? All the favors say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm not going to be able to be at the next council meeting at the appropriate date, so we're going to motion comment to the father of the county, which would be second or fourth.
Are we, nobody else is going to the legal cities conference right now?
Have you?
Yes.
Is it that week?
It's, it starts on the 23rd. I don't know. The 23rd is the chicken day?
I'm not sure.
Let me know if it's a problem.
I don't. Would the 29th be better for everybody? Cause there's nothing happening on September 29th.
What day is that on?
May it be the Monday after?
I'm a fan of whatever.
I just can't remember if I got to check in the 23rd in the evening, or do I check in the 22nd of the evening?
I think it's the 20th.
Yeah, okay, that should be fine, man. 22nd should be fine.
Give me like two seconds to look.
So we're going to stick to September 22nd for the next meeting. All right. Would somebody like to give us a fair update?
Would that have to be a, do we need a motion, or is that going to just be a special call for you?
It should just be a special call for me.
I bet Kathy'd love to talk about tomorrow.
Kathy, Danielle, they're all looking at the topic. So Mark, I think we saw you.
Well, tomorrow night is Kathy's premier event of the year that she doesn't want to talk about. Senior Citizens Night, and it starts at five?
Six.
Six, and it ends at seven? Should've talked about it. From six to eight, you've got to come wearing your cowboy attire, old west attire, and, or just come as you are, that's fine. We'll have some great cowboy type food that you might get out on the range, around the campfire, and have some good treats. Going to have some great door prizes, great giveaways. We're going to play some games of bingo, and if you win, you get, every round is $20 in cash, and then the final round is $50 in cash. So it's worth your time. It's free admission, and you get fed, free admission, free food, free fellowship. Kathy will talk to you. And Ethan else? Is that it? We have some great old west, classic country music.
Door prizes.
Door prizes.
Yep, and then Saturday is the, I don't know.
Family Sunday and the Soapbox Derby.
That's right.
Yep. There's going to be inflatables, food truck, soapbox derby race, all of that starts at two o'clock.
And Kyle's going to have a rescue truck in the soapbox derby.
I know, I'm so excited to see it.
He's been doing quite a bit of work on it. It's starting to come together pretty well.
Last year's.
So what's the location of these events?
Senior Citizens Night is at the Extension Offices Conference Center. And then Saturday is around the courthouse. I guess that's First Street, that's the street. The racers will be coming down, and then the inflatables and the, and the tricycle rides and all that. Cornhole tournament will be around the courthouse, right there. And that starts at two, and it'll go till it's over. And then that will lead into our big week of fair stuff, with the first night of Water Street Entertainment being Thursday, the 28th, with two-time reigning IBMA Vocal Band of the Year, Vocal Group of the Year, Authentic Unlimited, coming back. And opening for them is Jordan Fox, a local young man. Then Friday night, we have Pet That Yeti, regional group with Jackson County ties. And that night will, Resurrection, the Journey Tribute Band will be back. They got stormed out last year, but they're back this year.
What night is that going to be?
It's going to be Friday night. They take the stage. Pet That Yeti takes the stage at six, Resurrection takes the stage at 8:15. And even though they didn't play last year, I did hear a little bit of their sound check earlier that day, and they're, there's a reason they're the best, Journey Tribute in America. And then Saturday is a big day. Starts, I believe, at nine with the cruise in at the, at the Brian Isaac's place behind the ballpark. And then one o'clock is the big homecoming parade, and we're honoring the volunteer fire departments as grand marshals. Then at two o'clock, we move over to Water Street, and that's when the entertainment starts on stage with the karaoke contest. I think there's a few spots left, Jewel, if you want. So, and then also at two, we open up the, the library has bungee trampoline that's supposed to be incredible. Shoot you according to the rules, it's 20 feet. Brian's been saying 30, but hopefully if you're going 30, you're probably not coming back down. And so then we got a ton of great food trucks this year, new, new trucks that's never been here before. So probably the best food ever that we've had. And 5:15, Blair Carmen and the Bellevue Boys. He was here a few years ago. He's the Jerry Lee Lewis guy, plays with his feet, abuses the piano pretty good. It's amazing show.
That's Saturday.
That is Saturday. And then around seven, 7:30, we'll have the tradition of the Sarsapres Cloggers. And then at 8:15 is America's number one Alabama Tribute Band, which is Boys in the Band, even endorsed by Randy Olin himself, and he's performed with them. And in between all that is, we'll be moving the Jackson County's Got Talent winners will be performing whatever night they choose, they'll do a song or two, so we don't know exactly what night. That'll be happening yet, so you can check our Facebook page. And I'm missing, everything's free, free admission. I will say the bungee trampoline's free for kids, adults will have to pay $10.
They will be there Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's a good point. You do have to pay to eat, unless you win food vouchers on one of the great games we play.
Very good.
All right.
Thanks, Mark.
Sounds like a good show. My wife's going to be really sad, she's got to work Friday night.
Oh.
She's a journey pack.
Okay.
Well, let me say, if anybody has any questions, check our, the Jackson County KY Fair on Facebook, and all the info is right there.
Okay, any comments from the council?
I've got a handful. I'll start with my regular. Do we have any update on our fire department contract?
No.
Okay. Do we have any update on our fire truck that we need to pay for and get shipped?
He sent me the payment information, and I'm going to try to issue the check out to him, probably send it out in the morning. So I figured it was a little easier to do it that way, just send on the check and then go from there and just try to wire it or anything. That gets a little sketchy where we have to have two signatures.
Will we have to, are they willing to release it to the tow company before the check arrives?
That, no, I think it'll, once they get the check, then it'll, it'll go from there. I think is what it'll be.
All right. We're going to get the farm mowed anytime soon?
We don't know what it does there. I don't know.
Jack Atkins' son, yes, George, he does that.
You ask him to do that?
Did you, can not the jail guys do that?
They don't have anything that big and that. They, they mow our little landing zone spot for the heli, the medical helicopter to come in if we need it, because that's pretty well, it's flat, but the rest of that farm, you really need a tractor to, it's been pretty, pretty rough.
The lease has been given to Frank, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Danielle, but I think that's, the Frank thinks some revisions.
Yeah, we've, the newest attorney and I took sort of everybody's copy, put in everything that everybody wanted, and then I think that has to go back to Frank.
Yeah, I think that's been about two or three months ago.
Yeah, and I even thought somebody was supposed to get it to Frank, so we may have to just follow up with Frank.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause where our cascade system is having some issues, and we, the city purchased it, city installed it long before we knew completely about the lease, but where it needs some repairs done, it is bolted to the wall, so it is considered an appliance, so. Our, the system that fills are the breathing air cylinders, and McKee has the only one for the whole county, so everyone else in the county depends on ours to fill the cylinders. Where it's bolted to the wall, it's hard wired into the building, it's considered an appliance, so we're kind of treading, well, it's a little sketchy on whether we should be making repairs to appliances on the building the way the lease is currently written, so we really need, if you don't care, you can talk with us.
What's it going to cost to, to need repaired?
It's being, it's being repaired, but we really shouldn't, we're violating the lease because we're not allowed to alter appliances without their permission. So we really need to get with, if you can get with Frank and try and work this out, because it's going to be winter time soon, and we're going to be right back where we were with he again, pretty, pretty soon. Just to get the lease renegotiated, he's the president of that corporation. So, and have we talked to the codification people about them sending us a copy, an editable copy of what they sent us that's wrong that we've qualified for our ordinances?
No, I haven't contacted them back anymore.
I feel like if we don't hurry up and get that done, our warranty's going to expire.
We, I asked about that at a training on it too. It doesn't matter. We will have to essentially like, they will have to be re-qualified and re-passed.
Well, that, us passing that part's not the problem, it's us having to pay for them to re-qualify them when they didn't make the corrections to it that I, that we asked them to make in the first place. Like the itinerant peddlers licenses and all that kind of stuff that we don't have is in there? It just needs, I mean, we'll have to pass new ordinance to do it, but we just, it's been going on probably what, a year or two now that we've done that, so we've just not followed up with it.
So there's errors on the website in our city ordinance?
Yes.
And they need to be corrected.
Yes. Cause it has like a license for itinerant peddlers and just some stuff that, that they were supposed to have took out of it, and we looked at it briefly, passed it, didn't realize that stuff was in there, so we passed it, and it was wrong because they give it to us wrong.
So what's, I don't get why it has to be re-qualified.
Cause they'll have to basically make a new index.
Is it just because of changes, or is it something?
Yeah, they have to re-index it because they, it's, it's technically their fault because they put stuff in there that had been like previously repealed, and they didn't send us a copy of everything like A to Z that they were publishing. They just sent things that they had like questions about. So things that have been repealed or changed or updated, not everything, but some things are listed as a called by ordinance when it shouldn't have been.
Or things that we've never had. But itinerant, that's just a one that sticks out in my mind because it must be something from their.
They used to charge for yard sales, that's what I said.
Okay, so, so it's in there from.
So it's in there, but then the ordinance that repeals it is also in there?
No, it's listed as like a valid ordinance.
It's kind of like they, when they qualified it, they made it seem like it was a current thing instead of listing it as an old ordinance or not listing it at all. They kind of had it as current things, is sort of what they did.
Is there a reason it has to be fixed?
Because we don't have that in the.
Cause we're, if we have an ordinance saying we're going to charge you to have a yard sale, then we need to follow our own rules or change it.
But it was repealed by the council?
I think, I think so.
And so, but why isn't that, the fact that we repealed it in there?
That's, that's the question, like they, they should have included that part and not even put that in there.
Normally you would just have a ordinance, whatever, 2019, whatever, and then it would just be repealed.
So was this done by the legal cities?
American Legal Publishing.
Anything else from the council?
The winter business licenses due?
July 30th. I'm working on like going through those and sort of who's paid, who hasn't.
Are we going to send out notices to everybody, or?
To everybody who hasn't paid, like a delinquent notice yet.
Cause I think I'm one of them. I forgot all about it, which made me kind of think, you know. Are we going to send stuff out to all, like all the businesses that are listed as active in the city that never had one?
I'm going to try to.
Well, this is, this is the ones that we have on our list right here, and these are all the ones that I went onto the Secretary of State's website and found that List McKee is a, a place of business. So some of them are. Yeah, Rocky Hill Apartments, Second Mind Behavior. That Second Mind Behavior's the old S and D, they moved in there. So, I mean, if they're filed with the Secretary of State as doing business in the city in McKee, we probably ought to at least be aware of them and have them on our business license list. But the half they're occupied, we need to.
Call through that, Danielle. Anything else, anybody?
Yes. You know, we had a lot of break-ins lately on my street. Somebody broke in my car, they broke in, people across the street, the one next door, that man works for PRDC, and they stole a laptop and some other things out of that. Well, that man they caught, and he's in jail. But again, the other night, they broke in again to everybody's stuff. It didn't take much, but they're, they're there. I mean, you know, I have, I have one of those Ring camera thing, but it doesn't show my car, but it shows somebody with a flashlight, and you can't tell who it is, but you know, they did it again last night to the people up the road. So I just, I called the girls and asked them if they would send him, or send somebody up and down our road in the evening when we're all asleep, because that's when it happens.
Zach, so I'm only into this because I talked to him.
The neighbor talked to him too.
He did, and he, he's trying to get assistance from the Sheriff's Department right now. So he's off the rest of the week because he just had a procedure done, and like Xander's in the academy, and Donald's off on the paternity leave. So he, he's trying to get assistance, and he's trying to get that extra patrol. He's just, he's a little shorthanded right now.
And it's fine, and like I said, they, but it's scary to me to go out to my car and everything in my car is, is shut, you know? I mean, I've never had that, ever, and now all of a sudden, we got that.
He, he has them on rotating night shifts, there's just, both of the extras are off right now because of core time.
I never seen nothing. Now that's the truth.
I see them all the time. I see them park their town all the time.
And watch the speed zone in McKee. These people come, I said, work my home. I don't like to drive, but people go fast, go over anywhere, 70, 80 miles an hour, they flash, all the time.
I don't know what it is right there.
I think it's 45 right there, but I see like, I see all, I see all the whole variety of police parked at that car wash all the time. I see them there multiple times a day.
I never seen nothing.
We'll ask Zach to be at the next council.
Yeah, he's just, he had that procedure today, so he's off.
Just be sure and get him on.
If you've got three police, we'd just see one right there.
Well, I'll have to say I see quite a bit of them.
I see them, but they didn't do anything. Hell, I ain't gonna tell you.
I can't answer that dream.
But if you see them, if you do see them, you know, it makes a difference. I say one thing, they're not sneaking at the parking door. I mean, there's, there's no, all that's gone, so I like that.
But they ought to make brands.
Well, I'm sure they do.
I'll ask Zach to report at the next council. He will have an answer, I can answer. Zach, please chief. We'll have him at the next council.
I'll say more about Zach, I know, he was here and he was reporting. About every place. He never come to the report.
We'll be in here.
I've got one thing that I have not crossed out yet. Do you all still want to move the drop box?
Let's get our sunwalk through first, and then move on.
Where are we going with the drop box?
There was, we were talking about that, the, make it where like it dropped inside the building, or, or somewhere a little more.
Why, so many broken into that?
No, it was, I just, I'm looking, I write stuff down, and then when we go through it, when we get it finished, I put a red line through it, and I.
I love the fact the box is there. For years, we haven't been supposed to do that, so I.
Once I finally got everybody to know it was back there, like, and, and now nobody parks there, like it's an open parking spot, I haven't had any complaints about it being there. And there's like three cameras that point.
If we don't need to move it, that's fine.
It's good.
What's the, what's the latest on our water, new water meters? Did we get those?
I just asked about that.
We were waiting for the financial hold to be released. We haven't tested it, I think that's been released, and Matt is supposed to help me work on draft requests.
And the contract I signed was for the?
The highway road project. The highway road project.
What's, we have the road project and the water meters is about all outstanding projects that we're waiting to get started, isn't it?
The, the road project is the state road project.
But we just have to.
We have the sewer line replaced.
Okay. What's the latest on that one?
We, I think we've submitted the grant agreement, and we're just waiting for the snail of the paperwork to move along.
We're moving forward, then.
Does that sewer thing include me being attached to it?
I do not know, but I can find out.
Okay. I'm the only one in town that don't have a sewer.
Turn the lights off.
And the, the lid on the, on the, uh, what do you call it, teflon tank fell in, so now I have to have, it didn't slide into the teflon tank.
Turn the lights off.
Yeah, turn it back, bye.
There's, there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Good job, I'll make motions.
Motion by Dylan, second. I'll second you. Second by Bill, by Vicki, all in parrot, say aye. Any opposed? Parrot.